I'll take a roll call from Joanna, please.
Mrs. Giller. Mr. Pascal. Mrs. Annaly.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Dion. Mrs. Carrie. Mr. Nolan.
Here. I know we have everyone on here. I didn't necessarily hear everyone, but we'll work through microphone issues and things as we can.
Unmuted Mark and Sue, if you want to give them another shot. Mark and Sue, are you there?
I'm here, present.
Okay, there we go.
Perfect.
And now I will turn this over to Dr. Spring to start the meeting.
Our attendees this evening, thank you so much for joining our meeting. It gives me great pleasure to unveil publicly the Coho City School District's updated governance framework, our blueprint for success, which identifies what we value as a school district, what is important to us, what we believe in, and what we are committed to doing. I commend our Board of Education for all of their work in creating this framework this past year and for supporting the district in working to achieve these goals as we integrate them into the fabric of everything we do as a school district. While we are in the middle of a pandemic, a national crisis, we cannot forget about what is important to us as educators and as a community in preparing our students for success in tomorrow's world. We never could have imagined that when the board was working on these revisions this past year in our pre-COVID-19 world, that tomorrow's world would look very different. I am thrilled to be starting tonight's presentation with the board's revised governance framework as it must serve as our compass during this crisis, leading us forward in the months and years ahead. I'd like to start with our first slide, Erin. We love seeing our kids, so that's definitely a great pictures. We remember those days and we will return to them soon. Yes, so the mission of the Coho City School District, a partnership of schools, parents, and the community, is to prepare its students for success in tomorrow's world. And in times like these, our partnership with our parents and the community has never been more important. We are grateful to our parents and our community for their continued support as we navigate this health crisis and its impact together. Our vision: 2,000 empowered learners. This vision statement is short, impactful, and easy to remember. So what does it mean to be an empowered learner? Empowered learners are curious and motivated. Empowered learners have student agency. They want to grow in all aspects of their lives to be the best they can be, both personally and academically. Next slide, please. We believe in high expectations for all. Our commitment: All students will be prepared for post-secondary success and supported through personalized learning, achievement in academics, and exposure to careers. So what's new here? Go, stay there, I'll tell you when. The connection to post-secondary success as an outcome for all students is emphasized. Personalized learning is included as a strategy, which means tailoring student learning to meet the different needs of students based on each student's strengths, needs, skills, interests, and goals. An example of this is our new initiative of utilizing student success plans. Personalized learning also includes using digital content and tools in meaningful ways. One extremely positive benefit, and we would look to it as a benefit to the school closure, is that our students and teachers have migrated to a virtual environment. For example, elementary is now utilizing Google Classroom, and the feedback has been very positive. While we would rather be in person and in our buildings, that has been seen as a benefit. A focus on careers is also new. Our goal for post-secondary success is to support our students in their exploration and discovery of the world outside of school so they can successfully transition from school to a future career. Providing opportunities to support and expand their interests will give our students the confidence they need to aspire to something they never could have imagined. This will also help to make, help them make informed decisions about which classes to take and which opportunities they should take advantage of. Next slide. We believe in a positive school climate and culture. Our commitment: All students, staff, and families will be engaged in an environment that promotes caring relationships, open communication, wellness, and safety. This belief and commitment are completely new additions to our district's framework. The board wanted to make sure that school climate and culture was front and center. The research is clear. Students who attend schools with a positive school climate have been found with increased their self-esteem, decreased absenteeism, reduced behavioral issues, and increased school completion. We know that positive and healthy school cultures and climates are the foundations for high-quality learning environments, and they create the conditions for effective teaching and learning. Another new addition is the emphasis on open communication, which is critical to fostering trust and connectedness between the school district and all stakeholders. Next slide, please. We believe in future-ready knowledge and skills. Our commitment: All students will be immersed in learning to become creative thinkers, lifelong learners, effective problem solvers, communicators, and collaborators. This belief has been updated to include the work from last year's profile of a graduate committee, which identified our 21st century learning competencies. The next step will be to work with our teachers to operationalize and incorporate these competencies into our curriculum as we transition to the next-gen standards. Next slide, please. We believe in the efficiency of our resources. Our commitment: The district will be innovative in maximizing the efficiency and equity of resources. Now more than ever, we need to be innovative and efficient in how we use our resources. We also need to ensure that resources are distributed in an equitable manner. So before we move on to the next part of our presentation, again, I wanted to commend our Board of Education for creating and for revising our existing framework into this. And I think it's very, I think they're outstanding beliefs and commitments, and I'm excited. I'm excited to implement these. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Erin, I don't know how we do that if someone has a question or comment.
None from me.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, New York State under COVID-19. As you know, the governor has implemented a number of executive orders. New York State schools are closed until April 29. And according to the governor's executive order, districts must provide continuity of learning for all students. Districts are also required to provide meals. So what is the 180-day waiver and why is it so important? Well, schools are required to be in session for at least 180 days of the school year or risk losing state aid. That is why it is so critical that we follow the governor's executive orders. As you recall, the district was closed on March 16 and 17. We will take these days as snow days. This brings our total snow day count this year to three. We have now exhausted our yearly allotment of snow days, but rest assured, even if there is a late spring storm, we don't have to worry about closing schools, so we'll be fine in that regard. The first executive order closed school from March 18 through March 31. For these days, we do not need to use our snow or emergency days or vacation days. The next school closures were from April 1 and then, at this point, to April 29. For these days, districts must use snow days and vacation days prior to getting the waiver. The budget vote in board elections have been pushed back to June, and we are waiting for the governor to update us and make the decision on the date and the manner and the updated timeline. Next slide, please. The Board of Regents has made some extraordinary decisions for this unprecedented time. They have placed the safety of our children, families, and educators first, and we are grateful, we thank them. The New York State Education Department has canceled the New York State ELA and math assessments in grades 3 through 8 this year. They have also canceled the New York State science tests in grades 4 and 8. And yesterday, the Board of Regents announced even bigger modifications to support our students. Regents exams are canceled for this June. We are currently working with our administrators, our counselors, and our teacher leaders to determine what does that mean for each and every student. Graduation requirements will also accommodate the closure period. Accountability determinations remain the same as this current school year, will not change. And the rollout of state assessments aligned to next-gen learning standards for ELA and math have been delayed for one year. Next slide, please. This time, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Mackey, our school business official.
Good evening, this is Stacy Mackey. So state budget highlights under COVID-19 reflect flat projections for foundation aid. There is a caveat to the flat projection for foundation aid whereby the state is allowed to make periodic adjustments for certain measurement periods. The measurement periods are defined as April 1 through April 30, May 1 through June 30, and July 1 through December 31. Adjustments can be made if state projections for revenues are below 99% of the projections or if state expenditures are above 101% of projections. The plan is for the Department of Budget to create a plan once it's been identified that an adjustment is required, and the legislation will have 10 days to take action. Also included in the state runs, there is a line item for a pandemic adjustment. The pandemic adjustment for Coho City Schools is just under $600,000. The adjustment was based off of Title I allocations for schools. And statewide, the adjustment was for $1.1 billion. That adjustment is being offset by the federal stimulus monies. That's a separate line item in the state runs, and it's called the Federal Cares Restoration. So for the 2021 state runs, the pandemic adjustment is completely offset by the Federal Cares Restoration. It is unclear if state aid will be impacted for the current school year, 1920 school year. There is state aid due in the months of April, May, and June. We are hopeful that this year's aid will not be impacted. Next slide, please.
Peggy O'Shea, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will tell us more about the continuity of learning.
Yes, good evening. As part of a regional collaborative led by Capital Region BOCES and the input from our administrators and our teacher leaders, we prepared instructional guidelines during school closure. These were shared with staff last week and with parents on Sunday, and they include timetables, how learning will be assessed during this time, and what digital learning and learning will look like during this time period. As Dr. Spring mentioned, our elementary, at the elementary level, Google Classroom was rolled out, and teachers at the middle and high school level have been enhancing Schoology as their learning platform. I just need to mention Jensen Giacomo here for the countless hours she spent preparing Google Classroom in the background and also presenting professional development. And then also our teachers for so quickly learning new skills and adapting to a very different learning environment. Chromebook distribution. So Lee Joseph, thank you, our Director of Technology, with some assistance from IT and Capital Region BOCES, prepared 320 Chromebooks that were deployed. Some still need to be picked up, and they're readying for a second wave of Chromebooks in the near future. Also, our principals gathered numerous instructional materials as guided by their teachers, sometimes even through FaceTiming, and were on hand with volunteers to distribute not only the Chromebooks, but the instructional materials to our parents. All of our meetings have been held virtually. Staff, we've held staff meetings, teacher leader meetings, grade level meetings, aid meetings. So all of our meetings have been transformed to the virtual platform. Erin Cagwind, thank you. He's been there 24/7 to help us communicate with our teachers and our families. And then, as you've heard, we will be continuing to provide instruction during the originally scheduled break. This has just been a strong collaborative effort on the part of our staff. And so I know that Dr. Spring and Stacy are also going to mention the contributions of some other staff members. Any questions?
Thank you, Peggy. This is Jennifer Spring again. So feeding our students, this is, we are definitely outshining our neighbors. So during the March closure period, we served 9,914 meals to our students. This is impressive. We are a community that cares. I would like to thank our food service workers and all of our volunteers. We are still averaging 900 meals a day at this point. We have two school sites that are open, Van Skye and the High School. We also have four community sites, Rulier Heights, Saratoga Sites, Manor Sites, and The Venue. And we are also continuing to provide meals during the originally scheduled break next week. And we also provide more meals for a weekend so that families, our students definitely will have something to eat. So I'm very proud of this, that we've been able to achieve such a large number of serving our students. Stacy?
So the central staff was identified based from the governor's definitions. We do have our custodial employees reporting, direct reporting. We have our food service employees direct reporting. So thank you very much to Jim Stapleton, the Director of Facilities, and Brian Nolan, the Director for our food service programs. And also our partnership with Whittens, they've been excellent throughout this process. Also, we have a great relationship with our CSCE and partnership with our CSCE. So to all of our essential staff, thank you so much for all of your services and your dedication to the school district. Absolutely, job well done. We're also reporting, central office staff and our admin staff are reporting on an alternative schedule in order to comply with the social distancing requirements. And so we've been able to pay our bills and process payroll as we would normally. So again, job well done.
Next slide, please. This is Jennifer Spring again. So as part of our budget process, again, this is pre-COVID-19, we conducted a district-wide needs assessment. We met with those closest to our students, our administrators, elementary building leadership teams, teacher leaders, and representatives from special areas to inform our budgetary priorities. We then circled back to the stakeholders for recommendations for reductions. Unfortunately, this process was then interrupted by the pandemic. So to bring everybody up to speed, as you recall, our budget goals included: continuing to maximize opportunities for students, evaluating our existing programs and the return on investment of these programs, identifying operating efficiencies. This was the only budget goal that was adjusted, and that is limiting total budget growth to 0% based on the new school aid runs. The tax cap shall not exceed the levy limit. No planned operating deficit or use of fund balance. Reduce the use of reserves to improve our cash position and explore shared services and grant opportunities. Next slide, please, and I'll turn it over to Stacy Mackey.
So really, all schools, all local school districts are saving money today for the uncertainties of tomorrow. So we're currently operating under a hiring freeze. We will, for each vacancy or resignation, we will evaluate each on a case-by-case basis, look to promote from within and the potential to shift resources if available and if feasible. We were, before the COVID outbreak, we were under a spending freeze, so that continues. It's really just health and safety items, cleaning supplies, obviously. And we are looking to purchase filters and replace air filters throughout the district. Unexpended allocations, so there is the potential to save in certain areas, and that will be different depending on the duration of the closure period. So we have already at the buildings lowered the heating attempts to the state minimums. We've unplugged any personal devices, so we're looking for energy conservation. We're looking district-wide to save substitute costs, obviously, certain operating expenditures such as professional development, tutoring, certain contracts. And then we're going to reevaluate the spring athletic contest because there's potential savings to be realized there as well. Next slide. So really, the key takeaway for state aid is that it's really not assured. There's a lot of uncertainties around next year. So again, the pandemic adjustment, just under $600,000, that is offset by the Federal Cares Restoration, but that is a one-year grace, basically. Again, it is unclear whether the state aid will be impacted for the 1920, for the current school year. We are hopeful that it will not be. There haven't been any indications that it will, but it's just an unknown at this time. And then there is also the language for the measurement periods and the possibility of mid-year adjustments in the 2021 school year. And that is something that we haven't faced before. So it is really imperative for us to save any money we can this year in order for us to be in a better financial position for the upcoming school year. Next slide, please.
So at this time, we'll take questions from the board.
This is Helen. I don't have any questions. I just want to let the teachers know that they are doing an incredible job. I know how hard it is to do, I'm sure we all know how hard it is to do lesson plans, and then to switch it up so quickly and move to an online program is really something commendable. And I just want them to know that their efforts were unseen.
Thank you.
So this is Nate. Yeah, I have a question about the conversation that we were going to have prior to the closure. You know, we were going to circle back and talk to building staff and administrators about where they thought these deeper cuts could come from. Now that they're even deeper, will we be revisiting that?
Well, I think that, again, there are still some unknowns. And I think we need to talk to the board about a few strategies. But absolutely, we would like to circle back with our building principals and our teachers, definitely, to talk about what are some of the options to move forward. I think we all agree that in a post-COVID-19 world, when we do get back to our classrooms, we are going to need every single staff member who we currently have because our students' needs are going to be greater than we ever could have imagined with gaps in learning and also with the loss of connection that we'll really need to, you know, really address, I think, social emotional needs as well. So I think that definitely we need each and every person who's on our staff, and I'm hoping we can figure out how we can achieve that.
Thank you.
Matt Nolan, again, just two things. One is that for anyone who came in late, if you have any questions or comments, you can send them to a board email, which is boe-comment@cohos.org. And we'll try to get to those during our normal audience participation slots in the agenda. If for some reason we aren't able to, we will make sure to get back to you after the meeting. The other thing I want to talk about is, there's a lot in flux right now. Do we know that we will, you know, with where we're at right now, with the budget that we've been given and the amount we're saving, do we think we'll be worse off regardless? Or is there a chance that if the state doesn't revise their budgets mid-year next year, that we'll be, you know, maybe not as bad as we had expected?
Well, I can start off, and then I'll have Stacy talk about it as well. So we were anticipating, pre-COVID-19, a 3% increase in foundation aid. So that did not happen. We are flat. So already off the bat, we have a 600,000 new gap. So we have to figure out how we're going to obviously close that gap. So then in addition to that, there could be some state aid takebacks. So it could be even worse than 600,000. The gap could be worse. Stacy, would you like to?
We are saving some here towards the end of the year.
Absolutely. And I think, Stacy, we did talk about that. I want to say it's close to, is it two, it's over 200,000? Would you, I mean, again, this is, at this point, this is assuming we don't come back this year with athletic contests.
Matt, I think you're talking about fund balance and cash position, yeah?
Yeah, and like what we might see. Yeah, and like what we might save for the end of the year.
So, yes, before COVID-19, when we discussed our long-range planning, we were trending very unfavorably for our expenses. So, we had made some mid-year adjustments, as you're aware. We had implemented a spending freeze, and we had made some modifications, some examples. We had a capital outlay for an elevator, and we elected not to go forward with that. So, we had already made some adjustments prior to the COVID-19. Now, the amount of savings, I mean, 250,000 would be a best-case scenario. It's going to depend on, there's a couple wild cards. So, it's going to depend on the duration of the close, and it's going to depend on our unemployment claims. So, we've been monitoring unemployment, but that's going to be an ever-changing because of the volume. So, that's really hard to put an exact number on. So, 250 would be a best-case scenario, but we are trending at breakeven. So, that's good news.
So, the best-case scenario, just from my perspective, the best-case scenario is that we are $400,000 less or more in the hole than we were a couple weeks ago. And that, you know, roughly, that's the best-case scenario that we're looking at is we're $400,000 worse off.
Yeah, the exact number, I think, is 438, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
I think Mark's trying to say something.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mark. I just unmuted you.
Stacy, the biggest difference at this is that loss of foundation aid, which may be somewhat mitigated. So, it's not a full $600,000 hit. It may, the balance be less than that.
So, at a minimum, in order to not grow the budget at all, the actual number, just bear with me one second, is 438,000.
Can I ask, at this point, what, we have, we have, our state runs complete to see where we'll be next year?
They are, they are.
So, with the budget passing, we've established the state aid?
We have. The only wildcard, Mark, is that measurement period and the ability for the state to take back mid-year.
And that, could that even happen this?
So, it's unclear. It could happen this year. We're hopeful that it will not. But there hasn't been any clear definition of when the actual takeback would occur.
So, the gaps that we're trying to close and the funding we're trying to realize for next year to meet our growth goals, we've been in the neighborhood of not quite a half a million dollars.
Right. And the discussion with other districts, that they have similar goals. So, most districts are capping their growth. They're trying to save today for the uncertainty of tomorrow. So, it's the same discussion that's happening in most schools.
And also, districts are not finalizing their budgets until the next state aid payment is received, and that is April 30th. So, because that will be, again, that will have to make adjustments. But we're hoping that that, you know, state aid payment stays as planned.
So, has there been any more information from Albany regarding budget votes, school votes?
Again, that's the Governor's decision, and we are waiting. And we are waiting, and what will that look like? And when will it occur?
So, I was, I was on a call with ASBO this morning, and they said that the idea for school boards to be able to vote and pass the budget is going nowhere. And so, it's likely going to be a public vote and that it would occur after June 1st. And obviously, once the date is communicated, then the timeline will need to be adjusted with all the deliverables. But it's basically a walk back because everything is dependent on the actual budget vote date.
This is Margaret.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions I kind of saved up. But I'm curious to know, how many of our families do we feel like we haven't connected with yet? I mean, do we feel like we're in a good place with technology and having them be able to access instruction? And are we making those connections? Just talking to one student, I know that, you know, this particular student hasn't done anything just because she's not being made to. So, I'm just curious to know, like, what we're doing to try and connect with families.
I can get started, and then we'll have Peggy chime in as well. So, our principals and our teachers have worked together in their buildings to really identify those families who are in need of a device and also in need of, who don't have internet access. So, that is one issue. And we now have a second wave of distribution of Chromebooks that we are now identifying the next layer of students who are in need. Again, we're only being, providing one Chromebook per family. So, you're talking about addition, a different issue. How do we engage our learners and motivate them? And I think that is obviously a challenge. We're hoping that the new direction and guidelines from the New York State Education Department on, you know, what is it going to take to really receive credit as your high school student, course credit? And we'll be going over that with our teachers to really try to appeal to kids that if you want to get course credit, you have to master the learning that we have agreed upon in those standards during this closure period, the evidence of learning. So, Peg, would you like to add to some of those points?
Yeah, this was a topic of discussion both at our elementary principals' meeting yesterday and our secondary principals' meeting today. We are looking at additional ways to connect with families, having teacher aides call certain families that we haven't heard from, you know, dividing lists, really keep trying and trying that connection. Now that the Chromebooks are almost all deployed, I mean, we do have a different wave. There is an ability under Google Classroom and Schoolergy to see who is connecting as well. So, we talked about systems for teachers to report to principals who they still haven't heard from and even go to another, another layer with those families. We're also hearing some stories about families who thought they were okay with devices and then finding that it's really hard to connect if it's a tablet or a, some other devices. So, we have not only our help button on the website, but we're also reaching out and talking some of those families through. So, and we are also talking about, it actually came up today in a BLT meeting from one of the buildings, ways to make sure that even if a child is connected, that what we're showing them on the classroom is accessible. So, more clear directions for parents, for example, how to run the video. So, we have, we are trying to approach it from many different angles. Just finished the first round of, well, second round of grade-level meetings, too. We have teacher leader meetings tomorrow, so this is always on the agenda. And we'll keep, we'll keep reaching out and coming up with additional ways.
I was just kind of wondering if we know, how many we're, how many are we talking about? How many families that we haven't connected with? How many kids have not, you know? I'm just wondering if there's some kind of advocating that we can do on the board's part to try and help out. I don't know. I have no idea.
I can get you that information. I mean, the principals told us who did not pick up Chromebooks or who did not pick up materials. So, we have that. And now that we talked yesterday about making sure there's a system about who's signing on or who's not, and asked for further information. So, we'll share that as soon as we get it. That's in, that's in the works. We'll give you the numbers.
Okay.
Margaret, one principal has also said that she believes that she has had some families move, that they weren't in school the week before the closure. And to follow up on, and we haven't been able to get in touch with them. So, that's been a challenge with families who moved right around that time to get in touch with them. And we haven't.
If it's something we haven't been able to get in contact with them, would we be able to do a well-visit to make sure, you know, that everybody is safe and healthy? I mean, we've been four weeks now.
Yep.
For a kid not to be connected.
We do, we do have lists of voicemail boxes that are full, you know, phone numbers that have been changed. So, those are the families that we could start reaching out to. I know when there was packet distribution, there was, there were a few families that were not reached when that was delivered. So, we'll definitely look at that. I know our social workers are also reaching out to families. So, we'll get you more concrete numbers, and then we'll, we'll look at every way we can. We have a meeting with the nurses coming up to, to talk about ways that they can reach out and coordinate with social workers, too.
Okay.
Thanks, Margaret. It's very important, and we agree.
Now that we're moving into an instructional phase, is there a thought of taking attendance? Are we going to be actually tracking, you know, if kids received instruction or not?
So, under Google Classroom, you can see who has signed on, you know, who's joined the classroom. It's not a periodic, every day, this is who's joined. But then, you can see who have completed the assignments and turned the assignments in. So, right now, and we're going to be exploring some additional ways, unless there's some function that I haven't learned yet or we don't have yet, we're going to be looking at it through that lens. So, who is, who is not connecting through assignments? Because we have some students who signed on day one but haven't connected. So, there's two different, you know, things that we are looking at. We're continuing to brainstorm ways. And I know that with Schoolergy, there's, there's similar functions, too.
I'm wondering, instructional plans, are they grade-level specific? Everybody taking Algebra I will be learning the same thing on the same day? Anybody in kindergarten is learning the same thing on the same day?
So, we're, we're not there yet. We have had grade-level meetings and content area meetings. Part of the difficulty is, you know, when we left, some of the classrooms were in, were in some different, different places. So, being mindful of that, we're approaching it through. I think we shared the website with you, the BOSI's Essential Ed website. If you look there, they map the priority standards that most build upon future learning for the, for the next school year. So, we're going to be talking in terms of the standards and making sure. So, here are the essential standards that need to be met. How do we ensure that these are being met, you know, both by grade level and content and then by students? So, that's the next phase of our, of our plan, especially now that we have heard that, you know, there is not going to be a Regents exam. And we'll have some more specifics for you, you know, in the very near future about that. But we're framing it around priority standards and standards that, you know, we need for future learning. And then, we're even thinking about, you know, depending on when we come back, we'll have to continue looking at this and for next year, too, for our students in front of us next year. So, so where are, where are the gaps?
And what about accommodations? Have we considered how that's going to look if we, if we have a student that has, you know, certain needs?
Yep. So, Erin and Karen have been meeting, and I joined some of the meetings with special education teachers, speech teachers. And right now, there's a couple of different things that are happening. If a consultant teacher, they've been named a co-teacher on their, on the virtual classroom, and you're able to assign, modify assignments and assign them to different students. And only, it's very student-specific, only that student can see the assignment. Anyone who is in a special class, reading or math, is, or self-contained, are also having classrooms with those teachers. We're meeting with occupational therapists and physical therapists to figure out how to have them be co-teachers, perhaps through phys ed and art. We're just starting to explore that area. And I know our speech are both co-teachers in some classes and have their own special classes. So, yes, and at the high school, very similar in middle school in terms of consulting and special class.
I know that you guys have distributed a schedule, you know, based on your collaboration. And I was wondering is, if there's office hours included, like where a parent, you know, maybe it's a Google Meet that they can join where a teacher's going to be available on this day at this time? They're offering that? If our administrators are offering office hours to both our staff and our families?
Yep. So, we, we have, the teachers have been talking about check-ins. I know that at the high school, that they are, they either have a schedule or coming up with a schedule. We're looking at that throughout. I know that they've been shared with students via Schoolergy and Google Classrooms, but a master check-in schedule that we could post on our website for parents as well would be beneficial, so.
Just a thought, I know that, you know, different, different districts are doing different things. But it was thought that maybe some of our club advisors might be able to try and engage some of our kids by doing online club activities. For example, we have a cooking club, and our advisor for that club is, they're literally cooking at home and learning recipes. It's just a thought, you know, to try and engage kids. And another thought was grade-level meetings, potentially having, you know, so that, because the kids are only seeing the other students in their classroom, maybe not seeing their other friends, or that's kind of a social gathering where there's a moderator, you know, whether that's administrator or, or a grade-level team member, just some thoughts.
Can I just ask for clarifying? So, grade-level meetings for students?
Right. So, Peg, remember, Brian held a grade-level meeting for seniors?
Yeah.
And it was well-attended, and they were excited. I don't know if it's happened for the other grade levels. We can definitely talk to the high school about that. I do know that they're continuing National Honor Society, and so that will continue. Let's see, I know that mentors are reaching out. So, that's something that is also focused as well. Future-ready pathways. So, one of our good news points is that we had our committee assembled, and we reviewed our applicants and our applications. We had a really strong group of students who applied from the eighth grade. So, we actually took more than we have in the past. Instead of taking the 25, we took 27 because we have two students who had left from other cohorts. So, so we just felt very strongly that all of these students definitely should have been this opportunity, especially in, you know, this new economy. And we wanted to make sure that we're helping as many families as possible and as many students are benefiting. So, we're trying to continue as many of these activities as possible.
Could I mention one thing, and the word isn't out there yet? But Kay Weiss, because we're in the, we're still in the process of finding out who needs instruments that didn't take them. But she's planning next week to start band at the elementary level. She's hoping to have the different elementary bands actually join at the same time. And we're exploring different things in special areas as well. So, but the, some good ideas, thank you.
Okay. And then, just a couple, I'm wondering if Joanna, you might be able to, I don't know if you've done this or not, send out communication to those parties that have already picked up packets for, for board elections just to notify them of the new changes? And then, as well, if there's any information. I know that not much has been distributed about that, but timelines, like typically, we pick up the packets in February, it's due by April. What that's going to look like if and when we have that information. But for at least right now, if we can communicate with the parties involved, just to say. But for at least right now, if we can communicate with the parties involved, just to say we're in a holding pattern. I'm not sure how informed people are. So I just thought that might be a nice thing for us to reach out. And then just maybe a thought to send out a reminder for students with the whole social distancing efforts that we're making right now, maybe just, I don't know, for their daily reminders or weekly reminders to not gather together, things that they should and shouldn't be doing. Because, you know, I'm still going to work back and forth and I do see groups, kids out and about. So I think it might be a good idea to just send out a reminder from the school district, just to, you know, just little things. And it doesn't have to be anything fancy, just, you know.
We can do that.
Only get with their friends.
Good, good point.
And then budget wise, you know, I know that we're kind of in a holding pattern, but I do think that this is a really great time for us to really dig deep and, and, and see where we are and what we can do. And just make sure that we're collaborating with all of our administrators, make sure we're putting forth the best numbers and figures that we can. And then last, just thank you guys. Peg, it sounds like you've not had a minute to not have a meeting. So I do appreciate all the work that everybody's doing, food service. And, you know, if there's anything that we can do to put the word out for more kids to be picking up those lunches, you know, we'd be happy to do it too on our end from a board perspective. I feel like 2,000 kids and 400 lunches, like we can, we might be able to reach more kids. So again, if we can keep communicating those things and maybe there's talking points that our teachers can make when they're doing their check-ins, just say that this is available in case people don't have social, social media or, or, you know, are not connected. That's it. Thank you.
Margaret, are you finished? So I just want to circle back to the budget for just a second. 438, Stace, is in addition to the gap that existed or in lieu of?
In addition. So it's in, the 438,000 represents the zero growth in budget to budget.
Okay.
So that's. It's in addition.
Okay. All right. So that's a pretty substantial hole.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know that's not an easy message to have to relay. Just also about the great things that are, that everyone's doing, I'm getting unbelievable feedback from parents saying that they're very appreciative of the teachers reaching out, of the principals reaching out. If maybe we could reach out to all the buildings and see what sort of out of the ordinary things they're doing to connect with kids. I've heard that middle school is having virtual lunches. You know, Harmony Hill, well, pretty much everybody had a parade, but I know they do morning announcements. Just the, if we could just maybe share some of the cool, different things that, the way that we're reaching our families, that'd be great.
Nadia, are you done? This is Helen.
I'm done.
All right. I've got a couple of questions too. I know for a lot of our students, school is kind of a safe place for them. This is kind of piggybacking on what Margaret said about seeing gaggles, because I've seen gaggles of kids too. And I guess I'm just a little concerned. Are we making sure that we're letting these kids know that there is social and emotional help out there for them if they need it because they feel like they need help outside of their home?
Yes. We've been talking about this, Helen. And I mean, just read the article yesterday in the New York Times about child abuse, you know, that this is increasing domestic violence. This is all increasing right now. And it's really important to keep reaching out to all of our students. So our, our social workers are making an extra effort to connect with, with all students, but especially those students that they know may really need or benefit from a check-in, as well as our nurses. That's a way we're utilizing our nurses as well for those wellness checks with students. And I know that Northern Rivers is continuing to offer telepractice. So that's something that's still available. And we do have a list of resources at Burn Hill and all of our, our special area providers have all compiled. And we have that on our, our website. Peg, would you want to add a few more things?
There's also been messages by our social workers on Schoolergy. Our social workers were part of, you might've seen the, the material distribution. I know one social worker, I think, was dressed up as the bee at Armanina.
I saw her.
Yeah. So they, so they are, they are reaching out. I also today reached out to our ESIS committee, our Adversive Child Drama Committee, because, to get some of their ideas too, to, on how, on how to continue connecting. We're also planning some additional virtual events. They're not unfolded yet to the students. But that was part of our secondary level discussion today too, is how could we take some of the events going forward that might not happen and make them virtual? So we're also exploring that as, that as well. I think, you know, the high school had a virtuals and middle school virtual spirit week. So just ways to try to have kids connect with us outside of the Google Classroom or Schoolergy. I've been listening to our principals read in the morning. It's soothing.
I know our school does morning announcements every morning and it's fantastic. So the other thing that I had a question about was I don't know what our quantity of Chromebooks actually is, but when we feel like we're in a good place with distributing them, is there any way for some families that might really be struggling because they have five kids in the house to get a second Chromebook if they need it?
I think that's something we'll definitely talk about. Once every family has at least one, you know, district Chromebook, then I think we'll have to take it and see what is the next level of need. I think we're at half. Peg, are we at half of our Chromebooks being distributed?
So we're at 320 with another 100 slated. That's 420. And Stacy, do we have eight? I think we're at half. Correct, Stacy? Stacy knows the numbers.
We're at half. And Helen, I think this is tough, but in the future, we would love to go one to one. If there, any, any way we could ever achieve that, I think it would be a, a great goal for, for our district and our students.
Be great. But for now, if we could just think about getting one more to some of these larger families, it would be great.
I have a question about the College and High School classes. The students that are taking college and high school, I realize the, the state has made accommodation for Regents exams. They're going to exempt the Regents exams. But those students that are taking college and high school courses, we, we need to be careful to understand they're still, are under the same expectations with respect to their college classes and, and those grades. I haven't heard any word in Hudson Valley about how final grades are, are going to be heeded. But they need, we need to be careful. They need to be aware of the future slight impact on their grades. And it's, it's, it's different from the things that are coming from all the city education department that do, do not apply to these college and high school classes. And I, I think it's important we communicate to those kids that they, they need to be checking their college email accounts and getting on their college websites to keep up with, with changes that might be occurring from that end. Because the, you know, the fear is if, if the wheels come off in a class like that, that, that could affect future ability to get financial aid. So it's, it's a, they're, they're different regulations and different circumstances. So I'm, I'm hoping we're, we're able to communicate to, to those, to those students.
Do you want me to just, so, so what, what I can tell you, this was the first priority. Because we found out right away from our HVCC partners, you know, Mary-Kate, that students had to continue online right away. So that transition happened overnight. We made sure each one of those students enrolled in a dual credit course had a Chromebook. They were really the first level of, of, the first wave of, of giving out Chromebooks. And I know that Chris Fornier and Brian Wood have worked very closely with Mary-Kate and all of our dual credit teachers to make sure that kids are aware of this, that they're constantly, you know, checking in and that they're completing their assignments.
That, 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 that's important that those, those kids stay engaged. And I appreciate that everyone seemed to be on that right away. I, I spoke with a high school teacher a few days ago. So I'm hoping things are better. At that point, he was a nervous wreck. He'd been able to connect with about 40% of his students. So I expect there's awareness and are, are we, do we have a plan in place where we're, we know who the kids are that are not responding and are not engaged and we're reaching out to their, to their parents? We, we know we have students that during the day are, are home alone and, and there's not, there's not a parent there to be, be sure they're logging on, doing what they're supposed to do. So we have lists of students that we just can't seem to connect with and we're, and we've identified and reaching out to their parents and the students to get them connected.
Yes. So Mark, that 40% that teacher wasn't a dual credit teacher?
Correct.
Okay. So that is a challenge, Margaret. Okay. Margaret did bring that up and it, it's a challenge. But again, our buildings, our, our principals, our teachers, we're, we're working on that, trying to connect with kids so that they understand if they do not, you know, complete the identified, you know, content and, and the standards under the closure, you know, they're in jeopardy of, of not getting awarded the, the credit.
And we're trying to reach out to parents as well.
Yes. Yes. You don't have to meet the Regents. Now we know. They're exempt from the Regents.
That, that was, that, that was really nice to see that. The last thing, maybe a little more, more positive. We, we've got, at the, at the McDonald's Senior Towers, we're, we're in a near panic with, with, with those folks. It's like a, a, a virus powder keg. We've got 90 elderly units in a confined area and we're, we're, I'm housing, we're just doing everything we can to try to, to manage and, and mitigate the closeness. And that they're so vulnerable. So many have compromised immune systems through enclosed quarters. It's, it's a nightmare. But one of the issues that, that came up today is many of the, many of the residents would wear masks, don't have masks, they don't have a way to, to get masks. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe one of our, one of our clubs or some of our students might be able to take on as a pride to make masks. And I, I'd see to it that, that we got the masks to the residents of McDonald Towers. You know, maybe some of our club advisors are, are looking for things to do. That would be a great, a great.
Great idea. Great idea. We'll communicate that.
If you need any help with that, I've been sewing, this is Helen, by the way. I've been sewing them. So if you need any help, reach out and I can help out with that.
I'll take whatever, no, I'll get them down there. Thank, thank you. All right. Thanks. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Mark.
It looks like Sue is trying to speak. If, if you can unmute her. Thank you. I have a question, Dr. Spring, about the Regents.
Yes.
It was my understanding that those, I just want clarification here. When you said they're exempt from the Regents, it's my understanding that if the student was failing the class prior to the closure, that they have to take that Regents in August to graduate. Is that correct?
That is not correct. So the standard is intention. Did the student intend to take the Regents exam? So if the answer is yes, then that student is exempt from ever having to take that Regents exam. So the big question is, will that student receive course credit and pass the course? So it could be in this case, the student does not. And then that student would still have to obviously retake that class. It could be in summer school or it could be in the next school year. But regardless, the student is exempt forever from having to take that Regents exam.
Even in August?
Even in August. Ever. Forever.
Okay. But if they're, if they're failing the class, they won't get course credit?
Correct.
I, I guess I, I thought I, I read that in the state ed regs, but that's okay. I mean, you would not. I just, I, I read that somewhere today. But that's all right. Thank you.
Matt, I just want to check if there are any other questions from any board members that didn't get a chance to share. There were a lot of good suggestions there.
I would, I would just, I would just like to add my deep appreciation for all. I, I know that, that the world turned upside down and, and I get the sense that, that our staff is, is just doing every, everything we could ask of them to, to try to make this work. And also I, I'd like to thank the folks that, meeting work. I, I know, I know Sylvie and Erin and there's a lot that went into pulling this all together. And, and I appreciate that as well. These are, these are the most challenging times that I, that I've ever been through with school. And I, I commend, I commend everyone for just, I think from this, this awful situation, it's, we're seeing, it's bringing out the best, the best in our folks, whether it's the parades or, or all the personal sacrifices everyone is making. I, I'm so grateful and, and wanted to be sure to pass that along.
Okay.
I'd also, I'd, I'd like to expound on that also. Our teachers, I think, are realizing, and so are the parents. The teachers are realizing they've never worked harder in their lives. And I can honestly say for the first time, I'm glad I'm not in the classroom. And secondly, the parents are realizing what those teachers do, which I think is also wonderful. Because sometimes I feel teachers go unappreciated from home or in the home and these teachers are working very hard. And I know I've heard from parents, they just can't believe all these teachers have to do right now. And it's challenging time and they're pulling through for our kids. And I think it's great. I think the district has done a great job overall in getting to our kids and they're, they're best. I mean, we'll always have those, those students that aren't, that won't sign on, that won't jump on board. You know, they're the same students sometimes in the classroom. You know, they're doing their best to reach everybody. And I've heard from a lot of parents and a lot of teachers that that's what's happening. So thank you.
Hi, this is Margaret. I just wanted to chime in on the Regents exams. So I think maybe Sue, the, the part that you were referring to, the, there is one condition. It says the student currently enrolled in a course of study culminating in a Regents exam has failed to earn credit by the end of the school year. That student will then have to return for summer instruction to make up the failed course and earn the course credit. But still exempt from the Regents.
Yeah. And I don't think that's what, but that could be what I read, but I don't think that's what I read. But I would have to see. But thank you for the clarification. I'm not, I'm not the one that's the most knowledgeable. I just thought that's what I had read and I wanted clarification myself. Thank you.
With that, just assuming that there, it looks like there are no more, more board comments. I'll reiterate once again, I feel the same thing. It's incredibly challenging to make the transition that, that we have in the time that we have. And, you know, even working from home, it's a challenge. And teaching from home and trying to reach these students and the, the challenges that that imposes is, is great. And then we also at the time have to remember, we're not going to be able to focus as well. We're going to be learning less. We're going to be doing less well in just about everything because of the situation, the mental stress and everything that's going on. So it's a, it's a really challenging situation for everyone. And I know that we're all doing the best and putting our best foot forward to do what we can for our students and our staff. So thank you everyone for that. I believe, Jennifer, there was nothing else. I can move on to audience comment for the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you.
I did receive one comment from a parent, Ms. Joyner, who's a parent of a student at the middle school. And they were just wondering about the Chromebook distribution for middle school students and when that would occur specifically. for middle school students and when that would occur specifically, if we have that timeline.
So they had their first wave of distribution yesterday. And actually, I saw Mr. Pascal and his wife Joyce there. They, they happened to walk up to the Chromebook distribution. So that was yesterday. I know they still have some Chromebooks that weren't picked up. And now we're getting the next wave prepared in that list and those Chromebooks ready for the next level of priority for, for each building. So Peg, or Peg, what is our timeline with the next wave?
I'm not exactly certain. I reached out to Sylvie. He reached out to Merrick about the, for the, some technical support to help, to help. It should be, it should be soon. I think we're looking at sometime next week, but I'm not, I'm not positive. I'm wondering if this is a parent that had called the school to let them know that they needed a Chromebook or didn't get the, I know there was a message out on Schoology, so have, have them reach out to Dan and let's solidify the timeframe with, with Sylvie.
I will.
For the next wave.
I'll clue in Dan on the email and CC both of you as well. And I'm sure we'll, we'll get that sorted.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I will need a motion for tonight's consent agenda from two individuals, please.
Can I actually, I have a, I have a couple of questions or comments on the agenda?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Perfect.
This is Margaret, by the way. Seven, you're referring to the lab psychology students coming in. Are they, are they just going to be performing remote activities and supporting our psychologists? How, how is that looking?
So they are supporting our psychologists and exactly what you were saying. Peg, I think you know why I can ask this as well, Margaret.
I went the wrong way. So Lynn Hill worked with the college to come up with some activities. We, we spoke about it. I don't have the specific activities, but I do know that they came up with a plan.
Okay. Second question is seven F. We have the closure on there until April 15th, but now that's been changed. Are we updating that portion or are we going to extend this at the next meeting and vote on the next meeting? So we'll have to update it for every duration of the closure. Yeah. We're just approving the closure until the 15th right now, and then we'll have another motion to approve at the next meeting until the 29th.
Yeah.
Okay. And then last thing, seven G, just full disclosure, I have two family members on that list, my sister-in-law and uncle. Neither one of them live in my household. I would be happy to abstain if anybody desires me to do that.
I think that's your call, Mark. I personally don't have any concerns there, but that's your judgment. With that, without anything else, I think we can move on. Oh, I did want to, we have some donations on the agenda as well. And so I'd like to thank the groups and organizations that made those donations. I don't know that we'll be able to provide the activities that were, as they were originally intended, but I'm sure we'll replicate them whenever we are able to at the soonest opportunity. At this point, I could use a motion for tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. It's Helen.
I'll second it.
Roll call. Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mrs. Annalee?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion? Didn't hear Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any other board comment on anything at all? I think we covered a wide range. I, I did get one other public comment that I wanted to acknowledge from Mrs. Kelly, who wanted to thank Kayla Cole and Elaine Flato for arranging food service delivery as we started to realize the troubles with getting families and students to come for pickup and that they did a, a lot of work to help make sure that that happened. So thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Kelly. And thank you to Elaine and Kayla for their contributions to make that happen.
I wound up on the text messages for that effort. And there was a day, I had to get about 100 of them. So there, there was a lot of work going into that and a, a great team of volunteers that were there. And it was expanded, as Jennifer mentioned, to include the, the, the housing projects. And they really, again, went, went above and beyond. Appreciate that.
This is Helen. I just want to reiterate one more time how appreciative I am of the teachers. I, you know, one day, teaching my daughter fractions, just one kid, was enough to make me realize how absolutely amazing all of you teachers are and what you do and everything. So I just want to, again, extend you how appreciative I am of you.
In that case, I believe that starts to wrap things up here. Thank you to everyone for your participation. I've learned apparently that I have situational memory of the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll make sure to write that down next time. Apparently, I can only remember it in schools, I think. Is that, maybe that's how that works. It sort of makes sense. But anyway, thank you everyone for, for participating. We, I could use a motion to enter into executive session at 7:20 from the board, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I'm Margaret.
Quick comment. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Mark.
Just on, on, on the agenda, we, of course, want to mention that we've accepted the resignation of our high school principal.
Yes, thank you, Mark.
And I just want to extend, I know we owe and extend our, our appreciation for his, his deep commitment to our, to our students and to our school. And, and he'll, he'll certainly be missed and we wish him the, the best in, in retirement. I expect he'll be flying around, keeping track of all of us.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out, Mark. I, I know we're, we're very thankful as a district to the contributions. I do believe we got two motions for that. Were you able to get those, Joanna?
Yep. I got Sue Dion and Margaret Giller. And then I'm just going to do a roll call. Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal? Mark, can you hear me? Mrs. Annalee?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
With that, we don't anticipate that we'll be returning to open session this evening. And thank you again, everyone, for your participation. We will, if you ever have any questions, the same email will be open. You can reach out to us and, and we will get back to you as soon as possible. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.